Call the city council special meeting to order from March 1st, 6:15 PM. Please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Inocation be given by Deputy Mayor Jim Bernard.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for being with us tonight. Thank you for your love. Please put your arms around us and guide us and continue to keep us safe. The Lord please be with the people in our own community here at Avon Park, Hines County, as well as the state of Florida, throughout the country, and throughout all the areas that are affected by this COVID-19. Please protect all those people that are first line of responders, hospital people, all those people that are working to help keep this country safe. And please to guide our president as he goes through our path to goodness. We do this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I plead with allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a call.
We are still waiting on our city attorney. So I feel probably best to start with items number six and seven. Is the council opposed to that? These two discussion items with the two consultants.
Are we opposed to talking about it or opposed to those items? Okay, no, I'm not opposed to it.
We're off to a great start already.
Yeah.
All right, item number six, discussion of financial consultants, Mr. Lowell Clary. Are you with us? Is he on?
I don't see the name on here. I don't know if he's.
Is Brett Ford here?
Were they notified?
I didn't talk to him, no.
Okay. Well.
I guess Jerry is the one that commented on these. I did speak to Jerry briefly about the financial consultant. His, I mean, I guess we can just wait till he gets there. I don't want to put words in his mouth.
Okay, well, first item number four is information that Jerry provided, obviously most of it is statutes, but I'm sure he's going to want to comment on that as well. So it would appear to me the only thing that we could probably do is hear from each attorney in our selection.
I will say this, Mayor, that I really thank our city attorney for providence with all that information, current four statutes. It kind of gives us some insight to move forward. So I really enjoyed you.
He's done a fine job of bringing this information to us. We have a pile of it. We have three attorneys here. Let's start with number one, Mr. Kaplan Kurtz. Are you with us?
This is Peter Kirsch. I'm here with my partner, Steve Kaplan. Can you hear, can you hear us?
Good evening.
That's we've been. Pleasure to have you. If you would give us an overview of what you intend to provide, hopefully provide to us.
Sure, sure. It's a pleasure to, to speak to you remotely. Nevertheless, we sent along two materials. One was a publication that our firm put out that I'm not going to walk through called P3 Airport Projects, An Introduction for Airport Lawyers. And we also provided a PowerPoint, which I'm happy to walk through on the screen or just talk, talk you through for a couple of minutes, whatever is, is your pleasure.
Do you have access to PowerPoint there? Looks like we do. Sure, take us through that PowerPoint if you don't mind.
Okay, I can't see what you're seeing, but I'm going to assume you're on the first slide. Is that right?
We are.
Okay, actually, I think one, I think one of these views lets me see what you're seeing, which is a little easier. So if you could go to the next slide, please. I'm Peter Kirsch, and my partner, Steve Kaplan, is here with me this evening. As, as I think the materials should demonstrate, our firm specializes in representing airports and a whole series of different kinds of transactions, regulatory matters and litigation. But we have a particular specialty in representing airports and matters involving private investment, or as it's commonly referred to as P3s, public-private partnerships. We have about 10 to 15 lawyers in our firm who specialize in nothing but airport matters. And the team that we've put up here on the slide is the team we would propose to be the core team, plus about another 10 other lawyers who are available as needed, depending on the nature of the transaction. If we can go to the next slide, please. I, I think what distinguishes our firm from many others is that we're a national firm whose focus is exclusively on solving problems that involve infrastructure, energy, environmental, land use and transportation law. So the sorts of projects that the city is considering undertaking are within the sweet spot of what we do. Among our practice groups, our airport group is the nation's largest and most experienced in representing airport proprietors. And let me just make a footnote here that we do not represent airlines. Our specialty is in representing airports and public sector entities. So we understand the unique problems that the public sector has in trying to put together projects with the private sector in particular. And so we are focused very much on airport projects. Another piece I think that's important to recognize is that it's sort of a trite statement in our industry that once you've seen one airport, you've seen one airport. But once, when it comes to airport projects like the one that the city is considering, it's really important not to assume that what works for large airports also works for small airports. They're fundamentally different. And we understand that a project at an airport the size of Avon Park is not like a project at Chicago O'Hare or Orlando or another large airport. Third point I want to make is that we understand the needs of developers. That is, although we principally represent local governments, we do also represent developers from time to time, and we understand what their imperatives are. And the reason that's important in a transaction of the nature that the city is considering is to make sure that what you put on the table is reasonable from a business perspective, reasonable from the city's perspective, reasonable from a regulatory perspective. And so understanding what each side needs is really important. And Steve, before I go to the next slide, do you want to add anything on that point?
I do, just a point if, if you don't mind. We, it, it's very important as we've tried to educate ourselves about what's on the table here, that we come to learn your goals. And, and there, there is a spectrum, I'm sure, from reducing expenditures to generating revenue, to creating jobs, to helping the agricultural community around the airport, and creating economic development. And all of those pieces have to come together, not only in a transaction that makes sense for the short term and the longer term, but it, it also has to pass regulatory muster. And one of the things that is just critically important here is the overlay of the FAA and an awareness that I think you all have, that striking a business deal is not the only element here that needs to be addressed.
Thanks, Steve. Could we go to the next slide? So the next two slides show the scope of our projects for airports and public-private partnerships nationwide. And if you go to the next slide, in Florida in particular. And I think what the takeaway I'd like you to have from this slide is not only do we represent many Florida airports, but the size of our clients in Florida range from the very largest to the smallest. So we understand the, the problems of small airports, and we also understand you can't take a cookie cutter approach. We can go to the next slide. And Steve sort of alluded to this a moment ago, which is, it's really important for us that before we give any advice on strategy, that we learn and understand what the city's goals, motivations and objectives are. We do not have the temerity to assume we understand what the city wants to accomplish. We're here as your advisors. And so the first thing an advisor has to do is, this may sound odd, listen to you. We have to listen to what you want. We have to listen to what your objectives are, and we can give you advice in the context of what you want to accomplish. The next step is to outline the key risks and benefits for considering the development and the life cycle of the development. And here is where we can tell you about what has happened elsewhere in the country, and you can make the decision based upon better knowledge, whether there are particular risks or benefits that are acceptable to you. And again, we wouldn't presume to tell you what's acceptable to you, but we do believe we have an obligation to inform and educate you so that you can make a thoughtful decision. And finally, in, in providing this initial strategic advice, we draw from precedent, but we really need to tailor our, our advice and our negotiations to exactly what the city's objectives are here. That is, what you find acceptable may not have been acceptable in Punta Gorda. What Punta Gorda found acceptable may not have been acceptable in Air Glades and so on. And so understanding not only those projects, but what drove the airport and local government instance is important. We can go to the next slide, please. Now, on the next two slides, I don't want to get to this in much detail because I'd certainly like to leave you time for questions, and you can read this at your leisure. But, but the, the, the basic approach we would take is to gain a better understanding of the proposals and the particular legal and strategic and practical issues that each one prepares. And then we would have to address with you what topics need to be addressed, need to be confronted in a project agreement, and the key terms of any agreement. And, and I think what's really important here is a point Steve just made and want, may want to amplify on, is that unlike other public infrastructure projects, airports are particularly difficult because you have a very active regulatory environment with the FAA. There are formal programs that the FAA has for private investment. Whether this fits within that or not remains to be seen. But you have a regulator who is going to want to be very active from the get-go in anything you do. And so making sure that you structure a deal in a way that meets their needs is critically important. In a, in a sense, they're another party at the table. They are not just simply a regulator looking over your shoulders. Steve, do you want to talk anything more about the approach here on this slide before I go to the, the last one?
Well, I, I think you covered it, and I, I really would like us to get through this so we can answer questions.
So let's go to the last slide, and then we'll throw it up into questions. There are unique issues that are presented by private investment in airports. And I've listed on the left-hand side a number of the regulatory issues, some of which you may be familiar with already, some of which may be new to you, that are imposed by virtue of the fact that this is a federally obligated airport. And we presume, that we would want to discuss, that you want to continue to remain eligible for federal grants. You've gotten $4.8 million in federal grants since 2005, and you're likely to want to continue to receive grants going forward in the future. So the policy issues that you really need to consider as you look at both the regulatory structure and the business needs are, you know, how much local control do you need over the airport going forward? What are the off-airport impacts and benefits you want to consider? What is your view of subsidies of the airport, pro or con, or are there limits to those? And what about collateral development? That is, development around the airport, is that desirable or is that undesirable? So we've given you, if we can go to the last slide here, we've given you in just a couple of minutes, just the broadest brush of how we would approach issues like Avon Park is considering with this private investment. But I think probably our time is, is better spent answering, answering your questions.
Okay, thanks very much, Peter and Stephen. Do we have, council have any questions for them?
I do.
Go ahead.
First of all, gentlemen, thank you so much. I want to let you know I really enjoyed looking over your PowerPoint presentation. I thought it was well laid out. I thought it was really easy to follow, even for somebody who doesn't really know a lot about airports, even though I've flown many in my time. I've lived in Florida for almost 50 years, so I know most of those areas. And what I did like about your company is the fact that you did deal with a lot of small airports and all these cities that I'm familiar with on both East Coast and West Coast. So I like the idea that you know a lot about small town airports, which is what we are. And I do have a lot of questions. I could probably take up an hour of your time, our time, but I don't know whether I should do all that stuff this time. But let me just ask a couple, starting on your approach to the project and then to the issue of P3s. One of the things, I know there's a risk allocation, but what kind of revenue expectations can you briefly point to us at this time?
I, I'm sorry, you're, you're asking what kind of revenue expectations the city can expect?
Yes, sir.
You'd be surprised to know that's not a straightforward question. The revenue that is generated on the airport must remain on the airport. So if the city is looking to generate general fund revenue, it's, you, you will not be able to generate any revenue from the airport for your general fund. If you are looking to generate revenue sufficient that the airport, that the, that the city doesn't have to subsidize the airport, that's a different matter. And that really is going to require pretty deep looking into the pro formas and the financial statements that the proposer has given you to see whether or not they are going to generate enough revenue to, to, to avoid a subsidy. I, I will tell you that it is unusual for small airports of this nature to break even. And I think that's probably one of the reasons that the city finds a proposal of this nature to be interesting because, because at least what the, what, what the business enterprise has proposed to you is that you would break even. So that's good news, but I think we'd want to dig down and look at that in much more detail. And Steve?
Yeah, let me just add a little bit because there are, as this proposal, as we understand it, and, and I'm, I know we don't, we haven't had the opportunity to really delve into it like you all have, but there are, there's the core business of industrial hemp, but there's also the secondary and tertiary benefits both on and off the airport, like having a large facility to, to handle hurricane staging, for example. And, and how that gets structured, both financially and from a governance perspective, is, is critical. And Peter's, Peter's right that basically airport generate, revenue generated on an airport has to stay on the airport. But it all, there are also other mechanisms, depending on who's taking the risk and who's making the investment. And, and the, the one other piece of this that I want to just mention, because it, it kind of is at the core of some of the discussion that I think you all have had, which is, if you're going to lease the airport, the FAA is going to require you to get fair market value just for the lease. Now, how you structure that, what your upside is, you know, it's all, it can all be negotiated. But the end of the day, you have a couple of goals. You've got to, you've got to make the airport as self-sustaining as possible. And when you're leasing land, you've got to, you, you've got to achieve fair market value. So that, that's not a very precise answer to your question, but I think at this point that's about as far as we can go.
That was great. That, I mean, to my second question, about where you talked about other lawyers themselves. Are you, you have people that can go over this issue with us and talk financial advice for us, or is something that you think we should hire outside of consulting?
Generally, I mean, we're lawyers. Although we know the financial transactions of this nature pretty well, you probably are going to need financial advice. I mean, unless this is the most cut and dried possible deal, you would be well advised. The other side, of course, has financial advice, and you want to know what this means for the city long-term. Steve, I don't know whether you feel comfortable without having a financial advisor.
No, I mean, I, I think we can, we can tell you, advise you, and work with you on, you know, what, what the structure is, but trust me when I tell you, we don't know a lot about the, 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 the local or national market for industrial hemp. Just not something we know very much about. So we can't give you much of, of an indication of, you know, kind of what's fair or how you should structure upside, because you should have not just sort of a break-even point, but you also ought to have, if they really do well, for example, if you accept this proposal after a negotiation, you want to make sure you have some upside too, and that, and that if they're successful, you, you also share in that, in that success. And, but in turn, of, in terms of the actual numbers and the pro forma, particularly here where it seems to us you're dealing with a new company, understanding how well it's capitalized, where its money is really coming from, what it's really willing to invest, whether its money is equity or from lenders, those are things you want to all parse together when you're, when you're looking at this and evaluating both your benefits and risks.
Okay, and then the, the last question I have for you now is about the performance metrics and the site access. The fact that this firm wants to control basically most of the airport, your location, or am I concerned with having access to the public to that? Is there something you can speak on that subject?
Performance standards are in many respects one of the most important or the most important component of a transaction of this nature. Let's be blunt about it. If you turn over the airport to, to a private company, no matter how good they are, you want to make sure that what they do with this airport brings pride to this community and doesn't embarrass you. Now, what those performance standards are can, can vary considerably. I mean, we have clients who literally care about the color of the buildings and care about how often the lawns are mowed, but others really only care about the bottom-line profit. And so structuring what it is are the performance standards for this airport is going to be a function of what's important to you. And it's really the only tool you have, short of terminating the lease, which is a draconian measure you want to avoid at all costs. The performance standard of making sure that you get the deal you thought you were going to get. So negotiating those becomes really quite important.
And it's, it's, you've got here several different aspects of this. One is the airport management, and one is the non-aeronautical commercial development. And as Peter said, you got a lot of folks who, who use this airport for, for their GA planes, and they want it to be a well-run airport. And, and what happens on the commercial side, you know, is important, but it, at, at its core, it's still an airport. So you've, you've got to manage through both of those competing interests. Over a reasonably long period of time, you know, I, we've read numbers, 30 years, 50 years, regardless, that's a, you know, that's a, a good long time to turn over an airport to the private side.
Okay, I said one more item if you don't mind. That was the, the email that you followed up to Jerry. I guess, Mr. Kershaw, not about a simple question that may be difficult on financial consultants and so forth. Would you like to comment on that email?
Yeah, um, we, we are sensitive to the fact that this is not a multi-billion dollar deal. And so we got to be careful. That, that, I, I gave your lawyer some names of financial consultants who we think are really very good in this business at evaluating private investment in airports, but I don't want to overdo it. That is, I don't want you to spend ridiculous amounts of money on a, on a deal. These are all sophisticated financial advisors. There may be local folks who are also competent, but I've, I, I've listed the couple who we feel very comfortable working with and who are comfortable in deals of this nature. And so one of the real challenges, I think, for the city at the get-go is, is the investment you make now in putting together a good deal, even if it is costly to you, is it worth it from a financial perspective? I can't answer that for you, but, but, but the names we've given you are ones that we think are nationally competent, and you can feel comfortable. Their advice will be well-informed based upon national expertise.
Thank you very much. That's all I have for now.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask one of you guys. And it was very involved.
Excuse, excuse me, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Yeah.
I apologize, but maybe it's the sound.
That I want to thank you all for your presentation and your support. But I, I may have overlooked it, but I didn't see a fee schedule in here for your organization.
You, you, you did not overlook it. What, it wasn't in there. We, we try to adjust our fees to the size of the community and the nature of the market. Given the size of this town and Florida, our rates for partners would be 525 an hour, and for associates would be 375 an hour.
And also, can I ask a question? I, I know that you're a large firm. You think that you would need this many people to, um, as a team for the airport, the site that we have in Avon Park?
Oh, no, 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 no. I really don't think so. I mean, the, the, the point with, that we wanted to make is that we have lawyers who, who not only know airports, but specialize in particular elements here. And so we may want to call on some of these. But a, an airport of this size or a project of this size, it's going to be one or two lawyers. It's, it's not going to be everybody, but we wanted you to understand that depending on the nature of your questions, there are people who, who know particular subspecialties very well, and we'll call on them as necessary.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I have a couple, just pretty simple.
Go ahead.
On the page that you have, the Peninsula of Florida City, you have asterisks next to certain airports. What are the asterisks mean?
No, I, you know, I didn't even notice them. Just a moment. I've, I've got to look at the slide myself and see what the asterisk means. Oh, asterisk means that we were not representing the airport owner, the airport proprietor. We are either representing a community or an investor or a private sector for the asterisk airports. So for example, at Sanford, we do not represent the Sanford Authority. We represent a company called TBI that operates the airport. At, at Panama City, we represented a company that was buying the airport and so on. So e, each of these is, is a slightly different transaction. The asterisk ones were, were, were not local governments as our clients.
And of that list right there, are any of those currently active in terms of negotiating and consulting with somebody?
Oh, most of them are active. Not all of them, but in terms of negotiating for private sector investment, it, it, it's actually a little bit delicate because some of these are not matters of public record, but I will say some of these, we are absolutely in the midst of negotiating private sector investment, but I prefer not to list them by name unless they've been in the paper.
How about municipal? How many of these, just off, you know, from the list, don't count me which ones if you can, but how many of them are municipal or government represented?
Oh, they all are, except for the asterisk. They're, they're all local governments.
Okay. Were you by any chance available to look at any of the materials provided by the principals that have brought this proposal to the city?
We looked at some of the materials. We haven't been able to get all of the materials. I mean, I, I know there was a discussion at the city council meeting last week, and I wasn't able to download, unfortunately, their, their PowerPoint. But we did watch the, the meeting last week, and so we got, we got some sense of what they're proposing.
Also, one of the comments that you made in regards to Mr. Bernard asked a question on funding from the airport, the city currently enjoys a rate of, of return on investment from the utility that typically is not allowed, but it does go into the general fund, and it's based off of the depreciation, percentage of depreciation of the assets. Would there be a consideration perhaps to look into an ROI for the airport where it could go into the general fund?
It's pretty unlikely. I mean, Steve, I, I don't know whether you can think of a scenario where that would be permitted, but.
I, I think, here, here's what I would suggest to you, as, as the way you think about it. The, the, the normal operating principle is the one we articulated, which is airport revenue that's generated on the airport stays with the airport. Having said that, it's one of the most interesting things that we get asked to do from time to time, which is how to take some creative steps to generate money for shorthand the general fund. So not, not knowing the details of Florida law, I would say we're willing to be creative and really try and push the envelope, but we wanted to make sure that you all were aware, as we assume you were, about the core regulatory principle at work here.
There, there's one important exception. For those of you who were following the political debate in Punta Gorda, there is an exception. There's a federal program that specifically allows the long-term lease or sale of an airport, and the proceeds of that lease or sale. And the proceeds of that lease or sale may be taken off the airport. If you participate in this pilot program called the Airport Investment Pilot Program.
Right.
It is a very lengthy, very complex program. There have been very, very few airports that have chosen to participate in it. In fact, today, there are only two, Puerto Rico and Air Glades. And they're closest are the only two that are participating in the program. So it is possible, but it's not likely to be a program that you will find to be to be productive.
Any further questions? Having said that, Jerry, is there anything you'd like to add?
Well, I think I probably information. We had a very nice conversation, a nice conversation with all the. And Jerry, they were very helpful. I did not contact the consultants that they referred at that time. Because, I mean, part of what he said was, I don't think you can afford it, which I think, you know, was was one of those concerns that I wanted to bring to you. You want me to do that? I had already contacted a consultant that was referred by the the firm out of Miami, you know, by Saruda. And so I went ahead and brought them into the discussion. But I did not contact any other financial consultants at that time because of that advice at that time. It was something you could still consider. Obviously, you know, you want to know the value of the deal it is, but to the extent that we're going to choose if the. E three counsel can help with that, I'm sure. Now, by the way, I apologize for not being here, as I'm sure you were told. Two helicopter crashed. Couldn't go forward, couldn't go backwards for forty-five minutes.
We understand, Jerry. We forgive you. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Kershaw, we appreciate your time. We thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for the opportunity and good luck.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Wyseroda, Helpman, Cole, and Bearman. Are they with us?
Hi, this is Mitch Beerman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. I'm Mitch Beerman. I joined your last meeting and spoke briefly about our firm, and I believe I provided some credentials. A number of weeks ago, which hopefully you have in front of you. I'm not going to try to put it up as a PowerPoint because. I I find that under this format, it's a bit difficult to do that. However, I would like to just speak briefly to some of the pages of of our presentation.
Please do.
One of the things that I'd like to start with is the title of a recent business book called First Ask Why. And I think it's very important that in considering the offer that you got. And considering any unsolicited offers that the city receives that it asks why? Why should it do this? What does it want? And I think that Mr. Kersh alluded to that. That's probably the most important part of the conversation. The most important thing that any attorney does is listen to the client and try to understand what the client wants, what the client needs, and what the client needs to know. And that's what we do. It's not clear enough from the materials that I presented, which are mainly geared toward our aviation airports and P three practice. But our firm actually is city attorney for more than thirteen municipalities. And we represent another hundred municipalities in Florida and sometimes out of Florida on municipal law matters. And so I'm used to sitting where Jerry sits and advising two cities here in South Florida, the Village of Pinecrest and the Town of Cutler Bay. On every aspect of governance and every aspect of business and everything they do. And I'm very used to understanding what cities want and what cities need and listening for that. And I think that as important as it is to have. A lot of experience with the FAA, with airports, with Florida's P three statute, with all the aspects of Florida law and federal law and your laws that will. That will govern the transaction that you're considering to also have. A working knowledge of how every city works. And our firms gained a lot of that by primarily specializing in being city attorneys. Now, as a result of being city attorneys, we also learn a lot about. How to represent developers and how to represent vendors and how to represent the partners. And we do a lot of that. And what you see in our credentials is that we have a lot of experience doing that. From working with the largest airline in the world, American Airlines, to working with small municipal airports like yours. And working with small vendors and partners like the one that made the offer to you. So I those are sort of my main considerations. The other thing that we do, and you know, we're we're a Florida law firm. And, you know, some of us are admitted elsewhere, but primarily we're a Florida law firm, representing Florida municipalities. And businesses and developers that are doing business with Florida municipalities. But I I think that the other thing that we know about Florida is that. You know, and I had this example in representing all aboard Florida, what was then called all aboard Florida, and looking at their options. For their Orlando terminus. And at first, they were going to build a terminal on the airport, the multimodal terminal. And we switched gears because we were able to identify hundreds of millions of dollars in state funding. To to that that were available to Greater Orlando Airport Authority to build that terminal. And it was a it was a game changer, but it was just because we knew the governor at the time, we knew the state, we knew. Where there were opportunities that we could partner, we could bring in other partners and produce a win-win-win result. And so in addition to law, there are other levels of knowledge that I think we bring to the table that bring a lot of value. As you look through some of the types of deals that we've done, P three deals. It looks to me more and more like although your offeror has identified your airport as the site. That a lot of what they're proposing has very little to do with aeronautical uses and a lot to do with industry. And when you look through some of the other projects we worked on for cities, a lot of them had to do with that. And we always started with the why. Why? Why is the city? Why is the village, the town doing this? What does it hope to accomplish? In some cases, it's a revitalization of a neighborhood. In some cases, it's job growth and economic growth for the whole community. Hopefully, what you're hoping to accomplish and what you might feel that you could accomplish through this through this proposed transaction. Is something that produces growth and value for your entire community. And it's not limited to what happens in that space, in that airport space. E- even if it is, I think there are always ways to increase value to the community. That, you know, as as. As Mr. Kersh, Mr. Kaplan said, it's very difficult to move money off the airport. But there are a lot of other types of value that can be accomplished that would create. I think economic opportunity and growth for your community. I'm going to leave it there. I think that first of all, you can't really go wrong here. I think that having the fact the fact that Mr. Kaplan, Mr. Kersh came, you know, came in, were interested in in your project is. Extremely encouraging. I'm very interested in it. My firm is very interested in it. There was one other thing I I wanted to say, which is that as you look at the at the uses. Don't underestimate the future need for aeronautical uses on this airport. What I've seen lately, and I'm sure that Mr. Kaplan, Mr. Kersh would agree. Is that these general aeronautical airfields all over the country, especially in a place like Florida where tens of millions of people come every year. These general aviation airports have really increased in value. With the increase in people seeking alternative to regular scheduled major airline air travel. And also seeking to get to places where the majors don't fly. And I I know from reading their resume, they've worked on some projects that, you know, brought desirable. Private and commercial aviation into smaller airports in various areas. And that may be something that appeals to you in the future. And so as you're making this deal. You need to consider that, I think, what 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 is the future of that airport in terms of aviation use? If it's tied down too completely with non-aeronautical uses, maybe difficult for you to have the kind of, you know, to to entertain. Other opportunities that you may have in the future. And so it's just one of the things that I that occurred to me as I was kind of looking through the little bit of information that I was provided about the offer. And it's something that I think that is useful to consider as you move forward. I look forward to further dialogue, and I'm excited for you. Regardless of how you choose to proceed in terms of hiring outside counsel and consultants. But I think the fact that you had this interest from a private investor is a very encouraging sign. And I doubt it's the last time you will see that.
Thank you, Mr. Beerman. Does the council have any questions?
I have one question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
In reference, so you did, first of all, thank you for presenting as well. On your your presentation, you did include a fee schedule, but you had about maybe seven or eight attorneys here. Would you meet all of those attorneys at one time, or how would you how would you address that?
Thank you for the question. No, I I think that we we have eighty attorneys in our law firm. We can cover anything that a municipality would ever need. We've got, I mean, if if something came up and there was a labor issue on your airport, we we would we have people that can deal specifically with that that aren't even listed here. These core people are people who I thought had specific specialties that might be relevant. They might not be relevant, and we might not work at all. I think, as Mr. Kersh said, that the plan is, you know, for him and as well as for me, would be to staff this with two people. Initially, and bring in others as they're needed for specific questions. I just put there the rates there in case it it ever came up that we, you know, that we would call on them. I I wanted to say something else about rates, and I I appreciate the fact that you asked the question. The rates that you have in front of you are considerably higher than what Mr. Kersh quoted you and what Mr. Wheat quoted you earlier. I think it, you know, I I tend to think that when we're involved in something, we're adding value and not we're not a cost, we're 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 value-added. Nonetheless, I understand that a city like Avon Park can't really see paying, you know, the the full, these sort of. The prices that that perhaps a larger airport would pay. I had told Mr. Burr before the last meeting that in the, you know, I I expect. In any deal where you have a third-party offer or making an unsolicited proposal. That that proposer would pay your attorney's fees, and that would be the first thing you negotiate. And so the reason that those fees are there is that's what a private airport developer should be paying for your attorneys. I'm sure they're paying that much for theirs. However, in the event that you are unable to negotiate that, or you decide to pay your own fees for whatever reason. We would lower all those fees for attorneys by a hundred dollars. And in fact, if it makes it easier for you, or maybe it makes it more difficult, I will match what Mr. Kersh quoted you with five. I think he said five twenty-five for partners and and four twenty-five for associates. The paralegal rate would be one fifty. But again, if a third party is paying the fees, I don't see why we would extend them that that kind of a discount. And I would ask that they pay the the full fees.
Address the issue of the number of terminals that are included in these packets. It's fairly typical when you propose. Our firm does the same thing, but you propose, you know, people that are that'll bring the most to that particular project. And they're not all going to be working at the same time. What happens is somebody might have a little expertise over here that keeps you from having the research and spend more time, you know, at your expense, at the client's expense. Why don't we just speak to somebody else who has some some expertise, or they can do the research quicker, because they know where to go. So you put the people that have the most strength all in the same package, not all who work at the same time. And usually you have a project manager or client manager, and you have somebody who's with them, does less work, but also assists. And that that's generally how it works. So I would use five, five, a number of people you see attached to these proposals.
Do we have any more questions for Mr. Beerman?
I have a question. Maybe you can answer for me, sir, please. I I we've all been told that all the revenue that the airport received from Florida Airport Management would have to stay within the airport. We have a airport CRA right now. If I understand, the airport management company, they want to be able to control. All the property inside the airport, inside the fence, as well as on the outside fence. So any revenue that would go to the airport CRA, how would they be able to use that money if they don't have any access to use anything on that property? What what would be the purpose of my staying in the airport if you want a company out there working is a company that wants to use the airport?
Well, typically, a community redevelopment agency. Its revenue is derived from tax increments. So at the time that the CRA is created, there's a certain tax level. And the increment above that that is received as you go further is retained by the CRA. To be spent on community redevelopment activities. So it's two separate pots of money. It's not revenue generated by the airport. It's tax revenue that would be due to the taxing authority. And that's different. That tax revenue, to the extent you collect it, is revenue that is retained by the taxing authorities. Now, it's typically limited in airport situations because usually the airport is owned by the county or a tax-exempt. Under Florida law, a property tax-exempt entity, and so you're paying the the taxes that you collect on the airport. The the alborum tax is only a tax on the leasehold. It's not it's not a tax on the value of the land. But with respect to the CRA, and I don't know what area your CRA covers, its revenue is this is is derived or should be derived entirely from tax increments. And it's a separate revenue pot that wouldn't be required to remain on the airport.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Seeing none, Mr. Beerman, we appreciate your time.
I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, last but not least, we have Murray, Moore, and Herman. We have a representative from there.
Yeah, hi. Can everybody hear me? This is Nathan Wheat with Murray, Moore, and Herman.
Yes, we can. Yes, sir.
Oh, great. Well, again, thanks for the time today, members of the council, Mayor Anderson. Appreciate the time and consideration. I I did a very, very short PowerPoint. I'm not even sure it's worth putting up, but if you do want to put it up, I can go through it very quickly. It sort of introduces our firm, gives you a sense of of our background. And I I think we're kind of the unique animal here. There's there's you have two very fine firms that do a lot of this work. That are that are larger firms. We are obviously a smaller firm. We are local here in Tampa. I'm here in my office in Tampa right now. We have seven attorneys here in our Tampa office, another four in Miami. We have three licensed pilots, including myself. My partner, Chris Warren, and my other partner, John Murray, they had a a Beechcraft Bonanza they would take into Highlands Aviation to get, you know, get a new paint job. I've flown into Avon Park many times. I'm familiar with the area. And we are not only attorneys, but I would say we're, you know, we're aviation enthusiasts. We have extensive experience in aviation, and we provided a brochure and bios to to Ms. Gay earlier. I'm happy to go through any of those, any of the experience, any questions you may have about that. I want to skip ahead to the next slide, which is slide number three, talking about the transactional practice. Add up the transactional practice in our firm. I've been doing transactional work of of all kinds for twenty-plus years now. I've been doing aviation-focused transactional work going back to to twenty-ten at least. And my practice includes all sorts of things, buy, buy, sell aircraft. And my practice includes all sorts of things, buy, sell aircraft, negotiating airport leases and subleases, advising, and this is, I think, an important one, I might add. I advise airmen, air carriers. I've had an issue with a one thirty-five, and they just got a letter of investigation today. I deal with the FAA a lot. I understand, I believe it was Mr. Kirsch that said it's a very active regulatory environment. I think that's an understatement. We're very familiar with the FAA. We're familiar with how they do things and how they like to do things and how they want to interact with with attorneys when things need to get done. Our aviation litigation practice, you know, also extends to local airport authorities. We've represented the HCAA, the Hillsborough County Aviation Authority for a number of years. We've represented the Tampa International Airport on a number of matters. And then I'd like to speak briefly, if you go to the next slide, slide number four. And I think this is also important, even though we are an aviation firm in a lot of respects, our practice goes well beyond that. And my practice includes advising a number of non-aviation businesses. Just closed the deal for a guy who sold his fitness center studios in the Tampa area for tens of millions of dollars. I mean, these are things that we do. We deal with complex transactions of all sorts. And let me back up and make kind of a more of a general point. I think both Mr. Kirsch and Mr. Bierman very ably made their case and they said that you have to listen to the client. And that's the number one thing that attorneys do. When somebody asks me what my day-to-day life is like when I'm in the office, you know, the truth is, it's, I've got clients calling me and they either have a problem or they have a goal. And my job is to identify the legal issues, think through the issues. If there's really a problem, find a solution. If there's not a problem, great. If they have a goal, let's try to meet that goal. Let's try to make it happen. And, you know, just to give you a brief idea of the breadth of my practice, just in the last couple of weeks, I've looked at things like, does my client have to pay sales tax to sell a Learjet here in Florida? Does my fixed base operator client in Atlanta have exposure for taking a new aviation component, not doing anything with it, just buying it new, giving it to an aviation maintenance shop? That shop then does poor work. Arguably, there's a defective product, but under Georgia law, is my client responsible? And I'm a Georgia attorney also, by the way. We have attorneys licensed everywhere around the country. Just the other day, I looked at whether a client's proposed aviation maintenance practice meets the airport minimum standards. That's a part one thirty-seven agricultural operator. I've looked at whether a client who's based here in Florida in Miramar, whether they can be sued in a different state for their involvement allegedly in an accident that occurred in Southeast Asia. We travel all over the country and in some cases too, all over the world, to deal with these aviation matters. And I guess my overarching point with all this is that, yes, attorneys specialize, but attorneys have to be nimble. Anytime a client calls and has a problem, we have to think on our feet. We look at issues, we spot issues, we deal with any problems that the client may have. And again, we're quick studies, in my view. Our rates are shown on page, or slide five. Partners' rates of two seventy-five, that would be me. We have associate rates of two twenty-five and paralegals of one fifty. If we staff this, it would primarily be me and one associate. You know, there would be minimal amount of paralegal work, but probably not a whole lot. So we take pride in providing our clients cost-efficient service. We do a whole lot of different things. We're not just an aviation insurance defense boutique firm, although we do a lot of that. And in the course of doing a lot of that, we come across technical aviation issues, we come across airport land and use issues, and we come across land use issues, land use and zoning. And these are all things that will feed into providing the city a cost-effective representation here. Look, and all candor, like I said, we're the unusual one out of the three. We don't have any P-three experience. I'm just going to be upfront about that. But in looking at the term sheet, I mean, it doesn't, just based on my experience, I see things like force majeure provisions that have to be dealt with, based on, you know, the recent pandemic. I see assignment provisions with some contradictory language and other terms regarding the ability of this outfit, Florida Aviation Management, to freely assign the agreement or other provisions talking about subleasing the space. All of these things you have to fight through and think through and figure out what's in the best interest of the city. Again, I do this every day in every walk of my legal practice, not just aviation, but across the board. So that's it in a nutshell. I appreciate you're giving me an opportunity to speak today and, you know, it was nice to speak to you a couple of weeks ago as well. If you have any questions, let me know. And I look forward to answering those.
Mr. Wheat, thank you very much. Does the council have any questions for?
I have one. One quick one. What are your opinions, sir, about the city of Avon Park hiring outside financial consultants to help with this?
Well, both Mr. Kirsch and Mr. Bierman made a good point that I've said to clients before as well, which is, I'm not a businessman, I'm a lawyer. If I was a good businessman, I wouldn't have gone into the law, I suppose. But, and so there are financial issues that a client always has to consider. Having said that, you know, one of the advantages of having an aviation practice is you have some idea what things should cost in the aviation market, certainly. And we can provide, you know, some basic advice on that. But I never shy away from advising the client to seek assistance on financial issues. I think it's a good idea. Obviously, needs to be cost-efficient, but I think there are ways to do that.
Any more questions for Mr. Wheat?
I do have one. I think I heard, Mr. Wheat, did you say that you're familiar with FAA and DOT and all grants and things of that nature?
Well, we've dealt with the FAA and DOT on a number of matters. I mean, candidly, they, almost all of them had to do with more of the operational side than airport land use. But we have dealt with, you know, we dealt with the FAA to make sure that an issue in representing a client to come in and enter into an aviation maintenance sublease in the airport, you know, was appropriate and that there were no issues with, you know, with the FAA. And let me say, what you really need to do, a lot of this is legwork where you go talk to the local FISDO. It's a Flight Standards District Office. And you deal with the FISDO and the FAA is, in my view, in my experience, actually pretty easy to deal with if you talk to and you get out in front of them. And again, we have a lot of experience doing that. Have we ever dealt with the FAA on a P-three? We have not.
Any more questions for Mr. Wheat? Seeing none, Mr. Wheat, we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. So we've heard from our three perspectives there. Gary, do you have anything else you'd like to add to this?
No, no, I think any of the three firms could do the work at some level. Captain Kirsch, for has a very, very outstanding professional P-three and Boston and Denver. But how much of that work has been done here? Obviously, very little, more. Realize that more now. If I can be done, I'm a business area. West Rota's got also a P-three background, aviation experience. And then Murray Moore and Herman, from outstanding aviation firm. Clearly, I haven't really had any P-three experience. While the experience of aviation can make up for that, the rates are also substantially lower. And I would say the other two firms also have very useful rates for the US experience of the P-three area.
I'll just say, of the three, Captain Kirsch and Rockwell, to me, stands out probably far and above as far as the experience of P-three matters. He's pretty much, he'll pop up time and time again, articles or some one of them story in the area. And what I've seen, as Gary says, the rates are somewhat reasonable. I'm not surprised if they are at that rate. But I think at this point, that would be my
I have to agree with you there. I think the reason why, first of all, I do think all three firms are great. I thought they were great listening to them. They all have a lot to offer. But I think the main thing that I like about Captain Kirk Rockwell, the fact that they've done a lot of work with small imports. I mean, we have part of one of the smallest imports in the state, and I like the fact that they dealt with so many even our size or a little larger, the Boston larger one. I think that that would be my choice, even though I think the other two firms, the top two, raise out, West Rota, obviously have done a lot of people with experience with P-three. And they're willing to come down on the rate straight. So it's kind of a toss-up. I think the two great firms that I offer the rate, that's Captain Kirk Rockwell.
I would say that, you know, really select, we should keep the qualifications of the other firms, probably just to take, well, keep the airport. They both have significant experience in the area, medical, agreed.
Well, my thought is that when I'm looking at the practice, first course is why, where it's helping the home. Without listening to the presentation by the captain person, Mr. Rockwell, I agree with, you know, the team with their experience and what they presented, all wise, I like that anyway. And then they're specialized in working with small airports. So I like that part about P-four. And they are, they work with a lot of smaller airports, pick and choose.
Captain Grease, well, I like Captain, all of them, they're very good presentations, very good. I mean, they did their homeworks. Kind of threw me off with the last, the MNH, what I call them, not doing the P-threes. But I have to read that of the very first, the presentation with these smaller airports, I was doing really well. It's not that I just think they're good, good, really, but it's just not that.
I just want everybody to go through the look at the last one from Captain Kirk Rockwell, where he emailed Jerry talking about how difficult this would be, complex, not only complex, but also financially. And they're stating the fact there that consulting fee could be as much as twenty, forty thousand dollars, or whatever it is, up to fifty percent of that. And so it sounds like it's going to cost the city a lot more than we thought. I think the Terry paper about West Rota said it could be twenty-five thousand just to get started. So this is going to be a real financial problem for us to go forward with this, to do this. So that's something I want everybody to realize, that, you know, we're going to probably be on the hook for like probably fifteen thousand, or fifty thousand just to get through this, as much as, more. So that's something that we have to think about, whatever it is that they're finding. But I would hope that the mirror, if you, if it gets to a point where we can make the decision that proceeding forward, really, if there's a reason to proceed forward, and maybe then one of the parts would well fit. But I would just simply say that in speaking to both West Rota and Captain Kirk, they both had the same comment regarding the cost that we, you know, and the kind of thing that we were talking about, as I'm here listening. I would say also there's one firm that is well-known for P-three control that had a conflict of interest. I had had some conflict. So we couldn't proceed forward, but they also said the same thing, except verbally, that this is not going to be cheap. But in most of that, obviously, we're able to make it be on this worthwhile.
When we're talking about in terms of the cost, you know, we understand it's not going to be cheap, but the cost totally will pass on the city itself, or, I don't know, so the people that has reached out to them, they know this possibility, probably they're going to be sharing the cost.
I would think that, like anything else, you need to remember, that, you know, such a negotiation depends on how bad you want to be on and how bad they want to be on. Who has bargaining positions?
At this point in time, with families that have agreed to say, yeah. Right. So the idea would be that we at least need to get to a point very quickly to know if we want to move forward. Because if we do want to move forward, it's going to be a lot more expensive. We'll have to negotiate that with families.
Exactly.
Very good.
That's right. I like to make one other point under the Florida statute here in the Bible, the three-three, the council of public end games, we unsolicited proposal is the forward to follow on project. Under A, council of public end may establish a reasonable application, which we haven't talked about. Private, under I two, may amend unsolicited proposal to the public, and that's must concurrently pay initial application. That's right there in the Florida statute. We haven't talked about that yet. So that's something else that we need to
I think once you retain counsel, because, you know, statutes and so on are kind of quagmire. So I think, I believe that final decision regarding that too, would be slightly
If you want to hear from the consultants first before making this moving, I think they're unrelated.
I have a question, though, in regards to Kirsch and Kaplan. I can't find them on Florida bar, or I find anybody else, but except them, and I don't know why it's not showing up.
We have the Palestine. There are certain things that you can state and others that are not. Perhaps you want to ask that question, because they did represent the city of the Hudson Board of Aviation Authority, which, so I have to reference to them. And when someone had that, the article that we went, that's the firm about P-three, because before that, it never made any connection, so I still do that. I think that article, but I'm going to have them supported while I'm sitting. Proact, which they call, is the real representation, statement of search. I would have to say, and so
I think the Chicken Pot, Becca, the owner of the airport, that, of airport, they probably answered that question.
Well, but if there's a, on the fourth floor, that means that other people are in there, turn, that probably would be the worst. Well, I'm just saying, it's not listed, I'm just going to tell you.
Doesn't necessarily need to be a sure, have a form of law, never.
Right, right.
But if you're, Captain, or Mr. Kirsch, still on there?
Well, Mr. Kirsch is.
That's okay.
Do you want, are we new here or consulting?
Mr. Kirsch, are you with us?
I am indeed, yes.
We have a question for you, sir.
Sure.
I was looking on the Florida bar, or Mr. Kirsch, and your name did not come up. Neither does Mr. Kaplan's.
No, that's, that's correct. Nobody in our firm is a member of the Florida bar. Under the Florida bar rules, there are specific rules that apply to out-of-state lawyers who are practicing and they are labyrinthine. But one of the things that we always insist on when working on Florida matters is that we associate with a local counsel. Generally, it's the city attorney and we work through him. And that's usually the way we practice. But we are not members of the Florida bar.
Do you in any way see that would hamper your service to the city?
I'm sorry, could you say that once more?
Do you in any way see that that would restrict your service to the city?
No, actually quite the contrary. We prefer to work that way because it helps make sure that we don't, this sounds weird, that we don't have the arrogance of assuming we know your community. And that's why we'd like to have a local attorney who can tell us not just the local laws, which of course are very important, but the local legal And we, that's why we'd like to have a local attorney who can tell us not just the local laws, which of course are very important, but the local legal environment. And so by ensuring that we have that kind of essential partnership, it makes sure that we're able to bring the national expertise. But we don't try to second guess the expertise that your local attorney has probably gained through, you know, years, if not decades of work. So we, we think it works very well and that's how we do it around the country.
So you would be working, if you were to be selected, you would be working with our city attorney? Is that what you're saying? Would there be another firm someplace else that partners local or corporate?
Well, that, that would be your choice, of course. We would prefer to work with your normal city attorney, your, 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 your normal counsel. Uh, but we're, we're happy to, to do any other arrangement, but we, we generally prefer to rely upon the, the expertise of, of somebody who already knows the city much better than we could ever hope to know.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, any comments on that? Okay. Any other questions? All right. Do we have a motion? I make a motion, but we'll have to cut Captain Curry Rockwell representatives.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? If none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray, yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. All right. We will back up to the city attorney general information, who the Florida statute provided by Mr. Curry. Anything you'd like to tell us about this or for discussion or what? I think, um, once we, um, get the special counsel to discuss, uh, play at these, uh, with the, uh, that, that A regulations and things like that, that A I P that they were talking about, that, that pilot project, which I think has been finalized now, is actually part of the F A rules. But, um, I'm not familiar with that. But I have read in some of my research that that had been concluded, concluded in, um, but how we frame, do the framework of the deal is precisely why. I want to bring in the special counsel so that we can help us figure that out. Because if you read the statute, it's like we're going, oh, we're on bridge. The Florida statute, as Bernard pointed out. So I'll just throw that out because I read the statute. For a later discussion, got it? All right, we have the discussion of the financial consultants, Mr. Lowell Clary. I believe I saw his name pop up. Yes, there. Mr. Clary, you with us?
Good evening, I am.
Good evening. Is there anything, uh, city attorney would like to preface this for, he presents? Mr. Berman, White River was kind enough to refer somebody asked about financial. I think either I asked about it or he mentioned it. I, I had talked about it with you on the board and, you know, I thought you might want to consider a consultant that can evaluate the value of the unit itself. And value buildings and all that stuff, and how much you should be looking for as far as rate of return, if any, and how that's implemented. Of course, it would be the special counsel's, uh, deal. But, um, this was, yeah, I went on his, his, online to his information and looked very good, very towards, sort of, I did not yet contact some of the fine people that, um, Mr. Kersh referred to me, just based on time. And, um, but since I had already talked to Mr. Clary about it, just thinking that's, I wanted to bring him forward. Okay, Mr. Clary?
Yes, sir.
Anything you would like to point out about your resume experience here?
Well, it's been enjoyable, uh, listening to the discussions so far. Uh, the commission is asking the right questions and digging into this extremely well. And, um, I had provided to, uh, your city attorney, the Florida statutes on this, which I have, uh, when I was in, you may not know this, but I was with Florida D O T before in public service and developed the public private partnership program for the state of Florida back in the two thousands and did a number of, uh, large P3 projects in Florida. And also a lot of the grants you got for your airport, uh, I probably may have had a signature or two on some of those. But, um, because we did a lot of T hangar grants and a lot of other grants that, uh, local airports tend to use. But, um, I have a national and local practice on P3s and work for states and local governments. Uh, we did, uh, P3 with a couple of law firms. We partner with law firms routinely. We partner with what I would call technical advisors, uh, which would help you with develop performance measures. Uh, you may have already a city, uh, uh, general consultant as an example that you might use to help with some of that. But, uh, you know, very familiar with the space of P3s, very familiar with the space for Florida and also working with local governments. And be happy to answer any questions. And it was very good, uh, point made by the, the council member about a fee in unsolicited proposals. Uh, it is very, uh, routine to request an amount, uh, to essentially help you evaluate the proposal. Uh, that amount's up to you as to how much you want to set. I've seen them anywhere from ten thousand to fifty thousand as the amount for that fee. And what I found when I was in public sector is it, it tends to, uh, provide you two things. One, uh, money to help you do the evaluation. And two, it also provides how serious the proposer is. Uh, because if they're willing to put their quote skin in the game, uh, then that shows you they're serious about the proposal. So, and I had a many unsolicited proposals show up on my doorstep over the years. And when we ask them for a fee, uh, some of them went away. Uh, so they really weren't serious. So it tends to provide you, uh, with that level of comfort, uh, in that. And you are a small city, so helping to free that cost is important. Uh, we work with the local governments to provide you what you need to meet your goals. I'm a Florida C P A. I'm also what's called a municipal advisor registered with, uh, Security Exchange Commission. So I advise local governments on finance in these types of areas. And I've also done, uh, P3s and received national recognition for that. So public private partnerships are unique and they are not unique. And what I mean by that is they're unique in that they're proposing to essentially take over a service that you're providing today. But they're not unique in that you do, you do agreements with, uh, private sector routinely. So you're used to dealing with those types of things. You're used to contracts and agreements and those types of arrangements. You have good counsel, you've just hired good counsel, uh, that will help you, advise you on that. And essentially it comes down to what's best for the city and what's best for your citizens. And if we can't help you get comfortable that it is the best value for your city, then I kind of with a couple of the other presenters, which is what's your goal here? And if your goal is to essentially provide a good service to the citizens and also provide a revenue source that can help to free cost, you know, and hopefully that would be the goal. Uh, but you may have other goals to improve things at the airport and deliver an overall enhanced service. And those are the kind of things that can be developed in this. Uh, I will tell you, I have dealt with the Federal Aviation Administration and Mr. Kersh and others have been very clear on that. It is a unique space. It regulatory environment is complicated and it does take time and energy to go through that process uh, and get it accomplished. And I know you have a person coming up that I'm currently working with, Fred Ford, that has gone through that process for Air Glades Airport, uh, down in Lewiston. So it can be a bit complicated, but theirs is a little more, a little different than yours because they're doing a commercial airport in the future, whereas you're currently a general aviation airport. So that's, that's a big difference in going through that F A process that will be a little bit different for you. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And, and by the way, we are a niche firm. We keep our costs down. Um, we have the advantage of public service in our background as well as private service advising clients. And, uh, we have financial modelers that are trained by K P M G as an example and have done large scale public private partnership work. So we can bring expertise both at the detail level and at the strategic level.
Very good. Mr. Clary, we appreciate your time.
I have one question for him now.
Go ahead.
If, if you're selected, Mr. Clary, you are, um, financial consulting. Uh, what would be the very first thing that you would look at in terms of the city's finances? Would you be looking at a more global approach or just the airport?
Well, my first would be, uh, what's your goal? Um, and looking at your city finances in relationship to that goal. In other words, are you trying to cut cost? Are you trying to generate revenue? Uh, where are you trying to go with that? And look at that from the standpoint of your city and managing that efficiently. And then also look at what the proposal is proposing to provide to you. So.
I, I think it needs to be said, I mean, you've had quite a bit of turnover in the last three years in the finance department. And because of that, there's only been one employee that's been consistently in there. She's here this evening, but decisions have been made, I know beyond what her knowledge was, when things were done, there were things that she was unaware of. So I have the feeling that we'll be finding some discrepancies in the budget that, you know, I would hope that you would point those out along the way, even though they may not be aviation related or airport related, but.
We, we'd be happy to share with you what we find as we go through it and, uh, do whatever analysis would be useful. We can do that fairly quickly. Uh, we're used to looking at government budgets. We're used to looking at government financial statements.
Are you familiar with Navoline?
Pardon?
Are you familiar with Navoline?
I'm sorry.
Accounting system or government, um, software?
Um, I am not directly familiar with that specifically. But, uh, my background prior to, uh, getting at a management level was also being an auditor. So I, trust me, I could figure out how to get to the details.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Clary? Thank you very much, Clary, for your time.
Yes, sir.
All the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so obviously that was, uh, one financial consultant. I heard Jerry, you mentioned that there were several other financial consultants that the other attorney had recommended, right?
Honestly, I'm, I'm sold. Government accounting, just is it for me? I mean, it's clearly, um, the repertoire that he hasn't experienced in municipal accounting, uh, government accounting volumes.
I, I, I may be wrong, maybe Mr. Kersh can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the other firms, they were referring to a very large, um, firms. And, um, they're out of state. And, um, I, I think that would be for, for the, the financial end of this, it would be a necessity for them to come here. So that creates an issue, whereas Mr. Clary is out of town, has got. If Mr. Clary is still online, I have one question for him.
Yes, sir, I am.
All right, all right, sir. I don't think we ever asked what your fees or rate would be as far as your service.
Uh, my, it depends on whether you want me to cover travel in it or, uh, travel to be separate. So usually if I do an all in fee, it's, uh, three forty an hour. Uh, we are charging a, a ten percent discount right now. And, and I'll explain that to you. Uh, we were fortunate to receive P P P loans from the federal government. We're passing that on to our clients. So we're given a ten percent discount, uh, to our clients. So it would be that rate minus ten percent. Uh, for our modeler, it would be, uh, two forty minus ten percent. And then we have other staff that are in the one twenty five to one fifty range.
You have an idea how many hours you're normally putting into a P3?
It varies a lot. We have some that we spend a lot of hours on, we have some we spend a few hours on. It really depends on what, again, what your goal is. And we did one at, uh, Jacksonville Transportation Authority and those fees all in were probably, and that was a very comprehensive, long, intensive process. We're probably in the forty thousand range. That, that's, that's a lot, that includes negotiating the agreement. That was not just the evaluation. That included assisting the attorneys in the business terms and going all the way through and negotiating, uh, an agreement with the selective proposer.
So Jerry, what is the process in terms of, um, we have to have contracts with every one of these, you know, how fast, what's the speed in, in getting all of that done? He's going to have to have a contract with the city and the attorneys as well. So, you know, do they still have to come to us, although we may have approved them tonight, or we still have to approve a contract at another meeting?
Yeah, uh, you would, and, uh, but, um, like, we could do it in a special meeting or you have a, a week, a week. So you should be able to get that done in a week. You know, sometimes it's, you know, it's like tonight. Okay, any more questions for Mr. Clary? No, but thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Ken.
Well, that's one thing I liked about Captain Chris Rockwell, is they stayed right under there on the hesitation about being invited for consulting. And so in fact, if they even offered other names, I would like to be able to have a good way we should go.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I'd like to see what they have.
I think that having somebody like him look through your accounts and the airport can give you some service. Based on what I've heard.
Is it twenty to forty thousand dollars good?
No.
Okay, um, yeah, so it's my opinion personally, I'd like to see what else we have out there. Um, obviously we have three attorneys, the more the merrier to, uh, be able to pick against, so.
Well, we're kind of running out of time too.
Right? Uh, so on the board, is he a financial consultant or is it?
No, I'd say, I'd say no.
Okay, so let's pick with the financial.
Talking about, that's a bold type of person. He's like.
He's a closer.
Yeah.
Is somebody familiar?
He's entirely familiar with it all. I met with Mr. Ford.
But it doesn't negate the need for a financial.
No, definitely not. To me, the financial aspect is like number one.
Right, okay. So it's a separate issue. So as far as the financial consultant goes, does anyone want to select Mr. Clary now? Or do we want to hear what else we have there?
Yes, select Mr. Clary, yes.
I agree.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I hope that we select, um, Mr. Clary, who we, Clary, our consultant company, as our financial consultant.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? I believe Maria was quicker. But we'll go to the photo finish. All right, is there any further questions? Seeing them, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray, yes. Councilmember Johnson, yes. Councilmember Sullivan, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, no. Motion passed, all of them.
Thank you. All right, last but not least, discussion of consultant Fred Ford. Do we have Mr. Ford with us?
You know, and it's probably me I didn't call him, but I did step out and call for a nice little chat with him. But, uh, he said he's really not technically inclined to get on, so he didn't have to have someone walk him through it, you know, just out of the yard. But he wanted me to pass on that he's still enthusiastic of helping Avon Park if needed. he wanted me to pass on that he's still enthusiastic of helping Avon Park if needed. Um, wishes nothing but the best for us the other way. And he said, even if he hasn't hired, give him a call anytime, ask him a question, he'll answer.
Okay, he has, I think, uh, five thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, um, uh, I would just say that this guy's got phenomenal experience.
He was part of the Air Glades, um, he's very pro PPP, I mean, yeah, very pro business, very pro economic development, but also very instrumental in cleaning up the airways, um, issue that they presumably had there.
So the purpose of Mr. Ford would be what exactly?
Well, you know, I found him online through Air Glades and he was the first thing that I came up with before we started talking about attorney, before Jerry talked about finding someone else. So, you know, it might be overkill at this point, but, um, I can't emphasize enough the decades of experience that the gentleman has with PPPs before they were even called PPPs. So if it came to the point where we needed somebody that knew the intricacies, he knows everything about USDA, about FFA, I'm sorry, FAA and DOT and, um, many of the individuals that have listed their names on as principles on FAM. Um, he's a thought connector in my eyes. So I don't know, I mean, negotiating.
I think this probably would have served us better outside of attorneys, FAM, et cetera. This would have been more of a come, tell us what we need to do at our airport.
Right.
Well, it may be, it may be wrong, we, we decide pretty simply by building a new force, Mr. Clark, but I, you know, I agree, it's probably not something pivotal with his talent, but I really think he's a good resource and we should keep him.
Yeah. And I don't know Mr. Clary's involvement, but he mentioned Fred's name, which I thought was pretty interesting. So there's a level there of knowledge. Yeah, yeah.
You can Google his name and find out.
Oh, you can find him on YouTube.
Right. So, uh, obviously we have his resume in front of us. He's not here to have questions, but obviously we can call him after the meeting, as the city manager said. So is there any action that the council wants to take tonight on his resume?
I think we can hold off on it for now. That's just new question.
Well, I, I think we should convey to my interest at some point.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Uh, I would just want to say to, um, Mr. Kirsten Kaplan and, um, um, Mr. Clary, if you could get your agreement together, or if you can tell me, I would appreciate it. As you know, we're kind of on a short fuse. Thank you very much.
Good step, make sure that they got that message that we need to get their contract ASAP.
We will.
Thank you. Okay, well, that concludes our regularly scheduled agenda here. Is there anything else for the good of the city?
I just want to ask, I have one question for Jerry. Um, it seems as though you're going to also pay an additional incurred cost on top of Kirsh, on top of the accountant, and I don't know that we have a ballpark idea of what we're going to be spending for the next month and a half. So what part of that is going to be on us and what part of that is going to be on him? Last meeting, we discussed with them, they were going to pay up to ten thousand dollars. If you're going to pay ten for attorney, was that Kirsh or was that including you?
I have no idea.
Or just until you reach that limit of ten thousand?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, uh, I can't, I can't guess. Well, how much they're going to need in, in this, in that regard, but I'm, I'm, thirty years as a city attorney, I don't know.
Well, I can just make a suggestion that at some point, maybe we can tap into the CRA reserves if we need to get any additional funding for this because there is no money at the airport to be doing this. We didn't budget this and it's coming out in the general fund.
We don't, we have, we have just a question. Give me some, like, budget aside for the, um, the sixty thousand for, out of the general fund that might be, um.
The position of airport manager.
But that was CRA, it was also CRA.
Well, we can't use that.
Sure, I mean, you could use part of that, but it would have to go in front of the advisory board as well because the process is there for that. So that, they're going to have to have a meeting and that has to be presented and reviewed and it comes to us.
That's when the bills come out, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I would, I would just simply say that obviously Jerry fully understands the situation and he knows that we need to try to get to a very quick decision for a thousand mile view before we really get into the.
I think you know that my rates are extremely low compared to.
Ten percent off?
No, I'm going to add ten percent.
Jerry, Jerry, can I ask you one thing, though, on the statute? And, um, it's on page four and it's, it's talking about when we have to publish it in the papers. What is your opinion on when you intend to enter into a conference of agreement? At what point are we there that we're going to have to advertise this?
I never read.
Yes, it's page four, second paragraph.
Uh, you know, I need to read this in context and, uh, get back to you on that. Like I said, I kind of, I haven't spent a lot of time on this simply because I didn't want, as you mentioned, I didn't want to stupidize the effort.
No, I just, I just want, if you could look at, just to make sure whatever the intent is, that we get this out if we need to now or if one law firm gets it out.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think the intent was, you know, last, um, meeting just to bring to something, so just want to make sure we get it.
Well, I, I would hope, I mean, their councils looked at this as well. FAM's council should have looked at this and, and said, okay, everybody, guys, we should get this published, by the way. Let me, uh, ministry of reg, for ministry of register. But, you know, I haven't heard anything from him, so.
Okay.
We'll look at, we'll look at it.
Okay, thanks. Very good. Anything else for the good of the city? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, great.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.